Tonight is Monday, March the 24th. My name is John Richardson. Along with my colleague Bahman Yazdanfar. And we continue with our bi-weekly show, Independent Nation, where we are educating voters and exploring aspects of the upcoming Toronto elections. And tonight is actually interesting, especially interesting for me, because I will admit freely to not knowing anything at all about the topic that we're going to talk about tonight. We're actually going to, as you know, on the ballot, you're voting for a councillor, you're voting for a mayor, and you're also voting for school trustees. And tonight, we're going to focus on learning about what that vote is, the school trustees. And we have two guests with us tonight. And always best, I think, for them to introduce themselves.
Good evening. Great to be here. Sean Chen, I'm the Toronto District School Board trustee for Scarborough Rouge River, which is right in the northeast corner of the city of Toronto.
And I'm Chris Glaver. I'm the trustee for a Tobago Centre, so right in the middle of a Tobago.
Great. So what we have tonight are two school trustees. So actually, I think it'd be certainly interesting for me, and I think for anybody watching, what does a trustee do?
Good question. A lot of things. I think a trustee has a dual responsibility. One is as an advocate for their constituency. They are, after all, elected by a particular set of residents. And they have to advocate for their interests. But I think also, a trustee has to look at the big picture, which is the entire system of the board. And I think part of that responsibility is to make decisions that are in the best interest of students across the entire city.
So really, a dual obligation. Would you agree with that?
Yeah. So we provide the democratic oversight for the schools. And we've been doing that, school board trustees have been doing that since, well, for almost 200 years now. So it's an old, it's actually the original elected position in Ontario. Before Ontario was even a province, the colonists in upper Canada were electing school board trustees. And so we provide the democratic oversight, and we are the community representatives, as Sean was saying.
I have a question. As I mentioned earlier before the start of the show, I am a man of facts and figures. I noticed there are 44 wards in Toronto area. And we have 44 councillors. But I noticed there is only 22 school trustees, and 12 school trustees for the Catholic school. And then we have two students on each category. My question is in two parts. How did division and this geography is being distributed? Is it the same as the 44 wards? And school trustees have oversight over two? Or it is just different map?
Yeah, it's the same. It's the same as, so each of us represents two city wards. And our boundaries align with the provincial boundaries as well. So each of us represents the same area as one MPP.
In most cases. And I'll give you the example. My ward, for example, I have one full MPP's area, but I also have a chunk of another MPP's area. So this is the whole reason why there is review every so often into the boundaries, because population shifts. And in my case, at least, I have two MPPs and two MPs.
So how does this Catholic, then Catholic school trustees divide their boundaries? Four for each?
I'm not sure. No, it's not as clean, well, at least not in a Tobago. It's not as clean as that. I'm not sure exactly how they divide their boundaries. They may just divide the city into 12.
Isn't it confusing for the voters when they go to vote? Let's say I'm going to vote for Ward 29.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at the ballot and say, okay, this is the name of my nominees for the councillor. And these are the names of the nominees for the, or candidates for the school trustee. How do, how a voter knows that which one is which? If they are going from Ward 29 and Ward 30, which is covered in one, how do they know it is not Ward 29 and 28?
You know, it's one of the lessons that I learned in the last election, because I put, on all my literature, I put Ward 2, because the area I'm in is for the TDSB called Ward 2. But for the city, it's wards 3 and 4. So people were looking at my literature and saying, you're from Ward 2, you're in the wrong area, right? And so on 20,000 pieces of literature, I had to cross out Ward 2, where it said Ward 2, because it also said a Tobago Centre. So now I just talk about a Tobago Centre. I never talk about the TDSB wards. But it is confusing that the boundaries don't all overlap.
You were running once for a city council, didn't you?
Yes, I ran once in Ward 29. And, you know, it's interesting, because, I mean, I hate to admit this, but I was only sort of peripherally aware of the, of the school trustee election going on at the same time. I mean, clearly, as a general principle, they're not spending as much money. Some of them were kind of piggybacking on the signs of city council candidates. But I'm fascinated to hear your description of how the school trustee is actually sort of the original elected position in the province of Ontario. I mean, that speaks volumes about the importance of public education in upper Canada, doesn't it?
It really does, actually. It goes, I teach part-time at York University. So that's how I know this. This is actually one of the things that I teach the kids. And it goes back to the Common Schools Act of 1816. So in that act, gave the communities the power to elect three trustees who would collect money, build a school, and hire a teacher. And so the role hasn't changed that much in 200 years. And it's really been the foundation of public education. And it was also the foundation of our democracy as well. Because the people in the early 1800s who were fighting for democracy were also fighting for public education. Because they argued that, you know, if you, if people are going to govern themselves, which is what democracy is all about, then they need to be educated. And so you need universal free public education.
So what do you do on a daily basis?
Yeah, when you wake up in the morning, first of all, is it five days a week? Eight to nine, eight to five job? Or is it?
I thought you were going to say eight days a week.
It sounds to me like it's 34 hours, seven days a week.
Yeah.
It certainly can feel like eight days a week. And as my colleague Chris said. But I think the role has many different components to it. You are the advocate. You are the one that is likely checking the emails. People might call you in terms of...
Give me an example.
So a parent might have a particular issue. And we have a protocol at the board, which says, if a parent's not satisfied with a particular issue, they first talk to their classroom teacher. They try to work it out on a local level. They talk to the vice principal. If there is one, talk to the principal. If they still feel that they can't get that issue resolved, they can talk to the school superintendent. The school superintendent is responsible for an area of schools. And the principals all report to a particular superintendent. If they're still not satisfied, they can come to the trustee. But oftentimes, parents might just phone their trustee right away. In which case, I suspect most trustees are working with that parent to see how they can best resolve that issue. So there's a, there's a very local advocacy component of the job. But there's also a larger role, as I mentioned earlier, about making decisions at the board table. And this is where we have committees and different structures in place at the board level that trustees engage with and help make decisions that affect education across the city.
Could you give me an example, though? An actual sort of example in the trenches? I'm trying to figure out. See, part of the reason I'm asking this is, I mean, I think very few parents would even know to call a school trustee. Am I right on that?
Judging by the number of calls and emails I get?
I guess not.
They find out. I think when there's a problem, they seem to find out somehow. You know, it depends how engaged and if there is an issue. It's, and there's all kinds of issues that come up. Busing, school busing is a big one, especially at the beginning of the school year. Because everybody wants, you know, who's entitled to busing, wants their kid to be on the right bus at the right time. You know, the roots are being established at the beginning of the year. Sometimes a mistake is made, you know, and the kid doesn't get, they miss a kid, they don't pick them up in the morning where they're supposed to. You know, we often get those kinds of calls. Let's see, in my area right now, there's busing for French immersion schools. And the community feels that the bus, it's too far. The school is 12 kilometers away to the French immersion. They'd like us to look at opening another French immersion school or guaranteeing the busing, because they don't actually have guaranteed busing to that school 12 kilometers away. So, you know, it's involved so far, a number of community meetings, a number of meetings with different staff and the board, from the French department, from the planning department, to see if there's a way to resolve this issue.
Let me, let me put it a little bit simpler for my questions. Let's say, a person is sitting and watching our show right now. And says, okay, like Bahman, I have no idea what is the school trustee does during the day. For instance, with the MPs and MPPs, we know that they get up, they go and they have their breakfast in the Parliament Hill or Queen's Park. They have a chat, they have their water cooler talks, they have their gossiping, and then they go to their caucus. And then they have a couple hours in the questioning period, which unfortunately, there is no answer to that. But then they go and, either after their constituency or their cabinet, or they do, if they have a portfolio, they run their ministries. With the school trustee, first of all, let me go step by step. And please forgive me for my ignorance. Do you guys have an office, first of all? To go?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So you have an office. Do you go every day to that office? Or do you have to be there every day in that office?
It depends on the trustee. I just drove over from 5050 Young Street, which is where our offices are located. We had a seminar. It depends on what, what needs to be done on that day. In the same way that MPPs or MPs don't sit in the legislature all the time. Or they might spend their time in their Queen's Park or Ottawa office versus their local constituency office. You know, we don't get local constituency offices. So sometimes, for us, it's having a quick coffee with a constituent that has a particular issue. Or meeting them at one of their local schools. Or just trying to work it out over email.
So you travel back and forth between the, unlike MPPs and MPs, you have to physically go around in your, in your area?
Because each of us represents about 30 schools. And so we have to know what's going on in those schools if we're going to, you know, fulfill our job as community representatives.
So you actually work, then? You actually work?
Oh, yes.
Sounds like you're making house calls. Are you making house calls?
Yeah. Well, yeah, you've got 30 schools. So you've got to go to the schools. And there's just so much going on in each of the schools. Like, you can't keep up on everything. But, you know, some of the major issues, the planning issues, French immersion is coming in. So you've got to know which schools are going to be getting French immersion, like, sorry, not French immersion, the full-day kindergarten? Which schools are going to be getting the full-day kindergarten? Where the construction is going to be for the year?
And how you prioritize these things? Because what you're telling me is all sorts of the different gammas of the whole thing. Do you have to have a number of the, let's say, complaints or concerns about a specific issue to pay attention to that issue? Or every instance is that it takes your attention?
For me, it's clear, a constituent has an issue. I'm going to respond. I'm going to do my job. And sometimes, you might not be the person who can fix that issue. It might be a local classroom issue. In which case, you need to then work with your principal, make sure that they're aware of what the concern is. And the principal, who is responsible ultimately for that school, can work it out with the classroom teacher. But it varies, because there's all different types of issues that come about. And the issues that we can more easily engage with are the policy issues. Because we're there in the committees, at board, where we can put a proposal forward or bring forward some of those issues that parents have on the ground. You know, like busing, for example. A lot of parents say that it's not good enough that we only bus students that live beyond 1.6 kilometers for the elementary grades. So an issue like that is a board policy. And as a trustee, we are able to bring that issue to the board table for a healthy discussion and then vote on it as a system. But we don't have, you know, I always remind parents, right, that we have a set of policies and procedures in place. We don't have the ability to just change that as an individual trustee. We have to vote as a board, and the decisions we make are made as a board.
Which brings me to the point of the comparison between you guys and MPs and MBPs. Because usually, based on the, our history, when we are talking about MPs or MPPs, you are talking about three mainstream political parties mainly. That is why I said those people, they are like a party for the party, as my colleague usually says that. And when they go to Queen's Park, there are five or 10 from NDP or Conservative or Liberal that are hanging around with each other. You don't have that luxury, do you?
No.
So you are working...
Liability.
Well, I was going to say, is it a luxury?
Well, no, I mean luxury in the sense of having someone around you if you need something or assistance, or you're like a pack of, I call it pack of wolves. But you work like an independent individual in your ward.
Yeah.
Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
And so you have to meet, sometimes during month, or every month, or every week, or every two months, together in a committee that you are talking to, to vote for something bigger. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, but a lot more often than once a month. Like, we'll use, I'll usually have, I don't know, eight, 10 meetings.
Meeting with the other trustees?
Mostly with other trustees, but there's also, so at the board, there are four standing committees. Each of us has to, has to be on at least one of those standing committees.
Could you give us some examples of what those would be?
So one is finance, one is budget. Actually, that's not a standing committee, but it is another committee.
Finance and budget are two different things?
Slightly separate, yeah. Because, and then there's audit, programs, and...
What's the other one I missed?
Facilities.
Facilities. And human resources.
Right.
So, okay, can you distinguish between audit, finance, and budget?
Budget.
All of these three?
How about finance and budget? That is sanctioning the most interesting.
The finance, the administration finance and accountability committee, that's the standing committee. And the budget is a separate committee that I would say is really focused on that one piece. Because the budget is such a, such a big component of our year-to-year processes in terms of the decision-making. So we have a separate committee that deals with that. The audit committee, however, is mandated by the provincial government. So every school board is supposed to have an audit committee. And on that audit committee are external members that also sit on it. So it's also quite specialized. But ultimately, you know, we have, we have many committees. And that's really just a few that Chris has thrown out there. There's, there's probably dozens.
Yeah. And then there's another nine advisory committees, which are community members who come to the board about a particular issue. So there's a parent involvement advisory committee. And there's 22 parents from across the city, plus some other groups as well there. So that committee consists of about 40 people. And then there's a special education advisory committee. There's a community use of schools, which is for permits of space. And so all these committees, these advisory committees, have community members on them who give us information about what's happening in the schools and how we can better serve the kids and the communities.
So who chooses that which committee he or she is belong as a school trustee? Or are you involved in all of them?
Well, every year, we have what is called an organizational board. And we elect a chair from amongst the trustees. We elect a vice chair. And then we elect amongst ourselves. Or in some sense, you know, we try to work it out first. It's not necessarily an election. It's usually by consensus in terms of which trustee wants to sit on which standing committee. And then we, we have also appointments to external organizations. For example, we have a trustee that sits on the Toronto Board of Health, on the City of Toronto Children's Services Advisory Committee, on the CNE National Board, on the Toronto Foundation for Student Success Board, on the Ontario Public School Boards Association Board. I'm speaking from memory here, but there's a lot of boards.
Is there any pay associated with this kind of the work that you put in each one of those committees? In a sense of salary or bonuses or dime per dime day or anything?
There is, there's, there's one exception. On all the committees, the answer is no, except for the committees that are mandated by the provincial government. So if you sit on the audit committee or on the parent involvement advisory committee or on an expulsion hearing, there's, there's an honorarium that you do receive.
Yeah. And it's, I think it's $50 per meeting.
Also, so it's not like...
You're not getting rich.
You can't retire on that.
Because an expulsion hearing could take you up to four hours. And I've sat in one and chaired one that took six hours.
Yeah. So you go home at night dreaming of minimum wage.
Exactly.
You know, this is amazing. Actually, I really, thank you for coming in tonight, because I'm fascinated, because this is the best example, the way you're describing this, of direct democracy. There isn't a whole, and the whole problem. I mean, I just can't imagine a situation where somebody can actually call up, you know, I mean, they could actually call you up.
They have house calls, like old doctors.
Yeah. Goes back to the Common Schools Act.
Let me, let me ask you a couple things from early, early time that you started this. First of all, how long each one of you are a school trustee?
I was elected in 2010.
And you?
I was, I was elected 2006, so eight years.
Yeah, I read you. You were apparently from your infancy, you were involved in the kind of the community. Based on you, based on what is written on the website.
It's in his DNA.
My question is, since the program is mostly, in this program, we want to get people involved in every stage, from the voting all the way to become a candidate. What was motivated, each one of you have your own turn to tell me. How did you start? One day, just you get up and say, oh, I have nothing else to do. I'm between the jobs I want to go and be a school trustee?
I want to go be a school board trustee.
How did you start it? What was, what was, what was the motive behind your decision anyhow? First, let's just start with Mr. Chen.
Well, I would say I was very involved from early on. And particularly in my high school years, I was involved in a lot of community service activities. I was chair of the Scarborough Youth Council. So I had a lot of exposure to the political process, and particularly at the municipal level. In fact, at the time, we, we were just post-amalgamation. And we came together as youths from across the city and helped, worked with the Child and Youth Advocate at the city, who was councillor Olivier Chau at the time, and formed the Toronto Youth Cabinet. Shortly after that, I did have a work experience. I worked in a councillor's office, councillor Brad Dugan. So I kind of caught the political bug at a very, very early age. And, but I think you, you have to be really passionate about community service, because so much of this is, is really getting involved in the community, advocating on issues.
The moment you decided to put your name on the ballot, what was in your head?
What was in my head is...
I'm not talking about your passion. I can see the passion of both of you and your commitment. And by the way, again, I appreciate to be here. But what went through your mind, so to speak? Like, let's say, be a prosecutor in the court? At the moment, at the moment of committing or contemplating to commit this act?
The first question might have been, what am I getting myself into? Because it's, running a campaign is, is quite an experience in and of itself.
I can relate.
For me, it was, in fact, my second election where I was successful. I ran...
So you did once?
I did.
And then, and both times for a school trustee?
Yes.
Why not councillor?
I was very involved in a lot of the school board issues. And in fact, just as I was graduating high school, I sat on a committee that looked at equity within the school board and tried to dissect the policies and advocate for an equity-for-all type of policy. So I was more familiar there with those issues. And at the same time, I think, you know, I, I was also very involved in student government when I was at UFT. So, so very much education and equity were part of the community service.
So you're just something that you knew best, among other things?
Knew best and was really passionate about. You know, one of the big issues that, that really bothered me when I, when I did that run in 2006 was around how the board was spending ESL funding. And this is, you know, an example of what trustees can do. At the time, we were receiving as a school board $80 million in funding from the provincial government for English as a Second Language programs.
80 million? For one ward?
No, for the entire system. And that's based on a headcount of the number of students that are new immigrants.
Sitting in the class.
Right, within the whole system. The board was only spending, however, 50% of that money to support newcomers students.
What's happened to the other 40 million?
It was put into the budget to help subsidize and pay for other areas that were underfunded.
Well, this is exactly what the federal government does with the taxes.
So, what, in other words, to be clear, the governor of Ontario was saying to you, here's $80 million to spend on ESL.
Right.
And they were not spending that money on ESL, or at least not the full 80 million.
Right. And the province, however, they, they can give you money in one of two ways. One is in a sweatered pot of money, in which, and what it means when it's sweetered is that you must use that grant or pot of money for that specific purpose for which it's given to you. The other way is as unsweatered funds. And in this case, the ESL grant is not sweetered. So the board had this ongoing remove 50% and divert it to other parts of the budget. And I remember talking...
Were we really diverting it, for example? Just anywhere, or was it going anywhere consistently?
So this is one of the things about the way the budget works. Like, the province gives you money, and they say it's for ESL, or they say it's for this, or it's for that. But they underfund so many other sections of the budget that you have to use it. For example, utilities is underfunded. Utilities cost about, about $50 million a year. And they were, and the last time we saw it as a separate figure, they were underfunding that by about $10 million. So, you know, we had to keep the lights on, we have to keep the heat on. And so you have to look at unsweatered money in order to fill that gap. And so one of the ways, you know, one of the pieces of unsweatered money was ESL. And so that's, you know, so it's really, like, the reason the province says this money is for ESL is so that they can pretend that they're funding it, right? And then we, you know, and then they can say, well, you're not spending the money where you're supposed to be spending it, you know?
And do they, are they aware of the issue?
Oh, yes. Well, the four of the current MPPs in, from Toronto are former TDSB trustees. They understand the issues.
Well, the premier is a former trustee.
Yes, and the premier, as actually, if you ask, you know, you were asking how we got involved. I got involved as a parent. I, you know, I was on my kid's school council, and I started, it was during the Harris era. And the cuts to our schools were just coming. Every month, there was another cut.
To your children's school?
To my children's school, yeah. And every month, there was something else going to be cut. They were going to cut the daytime custodian from an elementary school of 500 kids. And if there was a problem, they, you know, like, in, there were three kindergartens in the, in the school. If a kid, you know, wet themselves or had an accident in the, in the kindergarten class, they would have had to send over to the local high school to have a custodian come over to clean it. Like, it was ridiculous. And then they were going to cut the kindergarten kids' phys ed classes, so they'd get phys ed once every other week. And so, you know, as a parent, I was getting more and more angry. And there was a Rosansky Commission, which was a provincial commission to look at education funding. And they were doing a dog and pony show around the province. And I went and spoke, and then I, there were some other parents there who were part of the Toronto Parent Network, which had originally been started by Kathleen Nguyen. And I joined that group, and I just kept getting more and more involved.
I'm glad you both brought two names, one Olivier Chau and Catherine Nguyen. Are you, you don't have to say anything, but are you in general, have a direct affiliation with any of these three mainstream political parties?
Well, I'm a Liberal, and I think people know that, but it's...
No, because you brought Olivier Chau. I thought maybe you're more NDP. He said Kathleen Nguyen. I thought he's more Liberal kind of thing.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, are you actively involved with the party activity? Uh, but, but what I'm saying is, are you pretty actively involved with the party activity? That, that is I am trying to say personally, not, not in a. Not in your, uh, in your title capacity, I'm talking personally.
I haven't, no, I'm not an official member of, of a party, and part of the reason I do that is, I really think it's valuable. I think one of the, the best parts about the democracy of the school board is that there aren't necessarily party affiliations.
But it's three countries, everybody can.
So you have to go, there's twenty-two trustees, if you have a policy that you want passed, you have to, you know, to work with all the twenty-two trustees and see. If you can get a majority of the votes. And, and every vote, there's different configurations. And the nice thing about the debates at the school board is that people are actually saying what they really think. You know, when you go, when you listen to the debates at the federal or the provincial parliament, everybody's just parroting the spin that comes from, from the communications. For the party, right?
That's right.
And nobody's allowed to step outside of those, I mean, there's all this, and so the, the, the real democracy is, is eaten away. Like, there isn't a real debate, a real healthy debate, whereas at city council and at, at the school board, there is a really healthy debate where people are actually saying. This is what I really think would be best for kids in the community.
You know, it's, it's interesting that, uh, every, every time the municipal elections come, come around. Somebody starts the discussion of whether there ought to be parties in municipal politics. And, uh, you know, I mean, I, I, I think that, my, my personal view is that parties are cancerous. Uh, to democracy in general. Uh, but I've always thought that the absence of political parties in municipal politics, one makes for better candidates. You know, part, partly for the reason that you're giving. Uh, but partly, um, you know, provides a mechanism so that you can in fact call your representative and. Uh, speak to them directly. And do you think there is a role for party politics in, in municipal elections?
You know, I, I think, uh, and I, I tend to agree with my, my colleague Chris here, is that it's, it's not necessary. Because I think it, uh, it really helps us to be able to sit as independents and as trustees or even as councillors, I imagine. There, you know, there might be some that have, uh, membership in a party or not, but at the end of the day, you don't have a caucus whip. Telling you how you need to vote on a particular issue, and you instead have your constituents. Uh, you have a system that you look after, and I think it paves the way really for a more collaborative type of democracy. Uh, in which you can try to build consensus and make the decisions that are, that are best for, for the students in the system, rather than what your party's platform is.
But do you think, I've always, I, you know, I've tried to figure out, and I've, I've thought about this for, you know, for some years, I, I do not understand how. Uh, when you have, uh, a democracy run by political parties, I do not understand how elected representatives. Who are party representatives can ever serve their constituents. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think. You know, I, being on the school board, one of the things that I've really learned is that most of the work is actually done at the committee level. You know, and if you, and so that's where the policy is hammered out. That's where you have people from all sides sitting down and, and. You know, looking at a, a policy that's being proposed and making it better, you know, um, and I. You know, I've, I've gone, I've deputed at the province on a number of issues around, around education. I've, I've deputed to these committees. And I can see, because those committees are generally all party committees, and that's, that's where there is an opportunity for someone to affect a change. Because maybe they're missing, maybe the policy hasn't considered a certain perspective or a certain, um, piece of information. And so I think that's where, you know, a, a, a local M P P or a local M P can affect change. The stuff that happens in questioning period, especially since, and, and lots of people talk about this, since they brought cameras into the parliament, it's just for show. You know, it's, you know, they're always trying to attack each other. There's no really helpful work, like, you know, the opposition is not going to say. You know, you're considering this piece of legislation, I think it would be strengthened if you did this. You know, nobody says that on the, in the, in the parliament anymore. They just say, oh, you know, what you're doing is wrong, it's, it's bad for Canadians and. Next time around, I hope people vote for me.
Let me rephrase John's, uh, point, uh, rephrase it differently. From perspective of bo- both of you as a citizen, as a, as a, as Canadians. And as well as someone who has been in the process inside the system. Do you think that is a good idea? That this level of the, uh, the, uh, influence of the parties in the provincial or federal. Has to be lowered down and led more independent in those chambers? Since you, you know that what is the benefit and advantages of the community level and involvement of the independents. Uh, are so beneficial to the communities, don't you think that we have to have some changes in the at least provincial level or federal even?
Well, I think in terms of how the parliaments are set up, there is a government, there is an official opposition, so structurally. It lends itself to that type of, uh, that type of, uh, structure, uh, but. I s- I know the benefits from living it in terms of the municipal level, where you have independent, uh, elected officials and you're able to work together. I, I, I don't know if changing the structure is the solution. I think that, uh, governments and, and opposition parties. Can make that conscious choice. They can try to work together. They can build consensus. They can try to listen and consult. Uh, with each other in a, in a more collaborative way and I.
Very optimistic.
I, I, I'm, I, I, and I'm using the word can, right? And I'm, I'm not saying they will or they have.
Have you seen any, uh, direct evidence of that?
Let me put it this way, uh, actually, uh, just I want to clarify because John is here, John knows more than me. Uh, uh, we are not talking about the structure, actually, original parliamentary, Westminister parliamentary system. There, there is no such a thing as a name of party in constitution. There is no such a thing. It always is M P or M P Ps representative of constituency go there and protect the interests. And the wants and needs of his or her constituents. That is the whole point. These are the voting coalition, as we call it.
That's what a party is, it's a voting coalition.
Now it become a party politics, take over of the people's politics. That is beside the point. What I'm asking, not to change the structure. What I'm saying is, if the, that kind of the freedom that you have in your committees. Do you advise or prescribe that kind of the freedom to members of the parliament or provincial parliament? In your opinion, I'm not asking you, give us the opinion of the trustees, the board of trustees.
You know, could I use an analogy?
Sure, of course, this is your time.
You know, if, when, when I was growing up and watching hockey in the seventies and eighties, it was a really good game. And then sometime in the nineties, somebody figured out the neutral zone trap, and so it just killed the game, right? It just killed the game, and, and I think that's where party politics is to a large, like, it's become a real blood sport. There's a huge ideological divide. Like, it used to be Canadian politics, you know, we would swing a little bit to the left, a little bit to the right, but really, the difference between. Um, you know, Bill Davis and Stephen Lewis in, you know, in provincial parliament in the nineteen seventies. Was not so great, like, Bill Davis was a conservative, but he, and he built, you know, a, a big part of our cat colleges, our, you know, post-secondary universities. But then you got every, the entire spectrum swung over to the right, and then you have, you know.
Mike Harris.
Mike Harris, and, and that's, I mean, that's the stra-. Right, yeah, and, well, and, and it swung so far that, you know, it's become a real blood sport. And it's like, it's, you know, and I think that has meant that fewer people, like, there's more and more control. Over what MPs and M P Ps are allowed to say, and you, and you see that restriction more and more. You, you hear them, every time they're on the media, they're parroting, you know, the, the, the communications pieces that they've, they've been told to say. And I think that, that is really unfortunate. I don't know what the solution is, you know, you can't eliminate the red line, but something like that should be done, yeah.
Well, really, it, it impacts very negatively on the quality of the candidates, um, also, you know, because they tend to be. Selected, you know, by the parties, you know, I think partially for loyalty and, and et cetera. But I mean, if they're not encouraged to speak their mind or think their own mind, um, I mean, what use are they, other than a mechanism to vote for?
Right.
You know, to vote for the party.
I think they are though. I mean, I think that's all happening behind the scenes. It's not the stuff that's happening in the media, it's not the stuff that's happening in front. Of the cameras. It's the stuff that's going on behind the scenes when a party is developing their policies. That's when there's an opportunity for everybody to get involved, and when committees are meeting, you know, at, at the provincial parliament or the federal parliament. That's when there's an opportunity for local representatives to get involved and have a say, you know, but when it, when you get into parliament.
Let me, uh, just, uh, swing away a little bit about your, again, go back a little bit, uh, earlier, in two thousand and ten and two thousand and six, in your case. Uh, you, you were talking about the campaign, and so you decided, okay, I am going to be part of this criminal family. Of the candidates. How many candidates did you have in each of your writing? What, uh, how many, what was the competition?
There were nine candidates.
Nine, on your.
Nine for school trustee?
For a school trustee, and you are.
The first time, I, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but probably around five or six.
And second, second, it doesn't matter.
Would, would that have been more than the number of people running for council?
I don't remember, I think so.
Uh, the, the question I'm trying to, the, the point I'm trying to get at is, let's say nine.
Actually, you know what, in, in one of the writings, absolutely, yes, in both it was, yeah.
It was more than the number. Now, how, how, how did you campaign? Give me an example. I mean, you were nine.
I mean, let's make it a real, hold on, I'd like to make this a real example. Do you do door to door?
I do, absolutely.
Uh, I want you to knock on my door. Hi.
Oh, I, I didn't know we were acting this.
Oh, we're acting it out, yeah, yeah, no, I really want to understand it.
It's because we have done it, we know what, what we get.
Hi, how are you?
Sean, I'm running for school trustee. School, what, what's that?
What's that? It's the person that you get to vote for on, on the election day. It, you know, you're, I think your point's well taken. There's a lot of people that do say, uh, what is a school trustee? Or they say, wait a second, I'm, I'm a Catholic voter, in which case you've knocked on the wrong door. Uh, or I'm, I'm a part of the French Board, because keep in mind that not every voter in your constituency is voting for the public English. School Board trustee, uh, if they're.
But they can.
Uh, no, because it depends on how they're identified. Um, if they have registered as a Catholic, uh, then they are voting for the Catholic trustee. Or if they're, uh, registered as a French, there's French Catholic and there's also French, English.
You would know this in advance before knocking on the door, right?
You would and you wouldn't. Uh, there's a voter's list that we get access to, but sometimes the information is wrong, or you get people that are. Uh, you know, have moved into the neighborhood, the voter's list is outdated, uh, and oftentimes it's, it's just not correct. Uh, but, uh, you know, this is where you sort of guide them in the right direction, make sure you're, you're on the, on the voter's list correctly. But, you know, people, um, y- you know, there's, there's the folks that, that are gonna question you in terms of what the role is. And then, you know, some people won't even have kids, and they might think, well, it's not important for me to.
Don't even know what a school trustee is, period, like, they've never even heard of it.
Uh, I would say, uh, I can't put a percentage on it.
But, but are you aware of it?
There, there's a lot. There's, there's some out there, and, and I think it depends on your constituency too. I, I represent a constituency that has thirty-seven schools. It's the second highest number of schools for a particular riding. So there's a lot of families, a lot of, uh, children living in the suburban, uh, Scarborough area that I represent. And it, it really depends on the constituency. I, I find that a lot of people do know what the trustee does. Uh, it might be a different trustee that they're voting for because they might be Catholic, but, but at the end of the day, they do know. And the ones that don't know or are not interested, you just move on to the next door.
So, wh- what is the budget for typical, uh, winning frontrunner in the school trustee? The campaign budget I am talking about. Is there, first of all, is there any restriction in the cap like the one we have in the provincial and.
Twenty-five thousand, right?
It's probably more than that. I.
How much?
It, it depends on the ward, and there's a formula. There's a formula and it depends on the population. I believe my ward might have been forty or fifty thousand.
Okay, and then it brings us to the. Uh, uh, nu- uh, center of the issue, which always, always we claim. There is not much of a democracy we left of, we left of with the monocracy, and that is. The reason you won, beside your nice personality, extensive knowledge of your community. How much of that was because of the money you, you have to raise it, I assume. Is that correct?
Or out of your pocket.
Oh, you can use your own?
Yeah.
How much of that? Because in the, in, in the federal, you cannot use more than eleven hundred dollars of your own.
No, you spend a lot of your own money in municipal elections.
Yeah.
You can.
You can put as much as you have or want to.
Okay, that is a good information.
Considering that you're running for a job that's gonna pay twenty-four thousand dollars a year, right?
Oh, by the way, how much they, how much they pay, how much is the salary of a typical school trustee?
Twenty-fourth, well, the T D S B, we're actually the best paid trustees in the province, and we make twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
Are you serious?
Yeah. Yeah, it's full-time work.
You're becoming my hero after tonight. And, and I'm, and I'm not, I'm not trying to compliment, I don't compliment people, believe me, the people who know me.
Now, Chris might have came on the board after the fact, but I can tell him that our salary actually went down. Because when I first got on the board, we were at the, at the, the, the maximum cap, which was twenty-five thousand. And that, the, the salary or the honorarium, which is what it really is, uh, is dependent on the student population. So we experienced declining enrollment, and in fact, that, that amount went down to twenty-four thousand.
And, and is there any additional budget for your assistant or office?
Yeah, so there's twenty-seven thousand dollars to pay for your assistant, your gas mileage, your telephone. You know, the computer expenses, all those things.
So you are working for a minimum wage practically.
Less. I've done the calculation and, and it's.
I believe it, I believe it's incredible.
Ten bucks an hour, I'd be doing better, I think.
You, you, be- be- because just the last week, they, uh, they, uh, announced that they want to get raised for the council. As for, uh, amount of the two percent, uh, two, one point two percent of their salary, which mayor opposed that. But that twelve, thirteen hundred dollars was over a hundred thousand dollars existing salary.
Yeah.
And my assumption was, school trustees make at least fifty, sixty thousand a year.
Yeah.
Try, now, now, used to, the, the trustees used to, I know in the old Toronto board, they, they made around that amount. And what happened, uh, when Mike Harris came into government is that he slashed the trustee salaries across the province. To five thousand dollars. So trustees at that point were making five thousand, period. Didn't matter if you were a large board, small board. Uh, didn't manage, manage the number of constituents or students, and then, uh, the current, uh, the Liberal government that came in. Uh, changed that, and so it's now based on a formula of how many people you represent.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on, just one second. So what, what then is your real job? I mean, but, I don't mean your real job, I mean, one that pays you. How do you pay your bills?
How do we support our trustee habits?
Yes, how do you trust, support that, that bad habit?
We established this is your hobby.
You're, you're teaching at York.
I teach part-time at York, yeah, and that helps. I mean, it's, I, I could be making a lot more money. I, you know, I'm, I taught high school for ten years. I could quit and go teach high school.
Oh, I don't doubt that, I'm just saying you're trying to figure a height, because you're clearly not even surviving on those twenty-four thousand bucks.
So between York and, 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 you know, the twenty-four.
I hope your wife has a good job, though. Uh, but by the way, uh, can you clarify something for me? What is, is a student trustee? What is it?
Oh.
And, uh, both Catholic and, uh, T D S B, they have two of each. What, what is their job and why is there, are they in the, on the payroll? What is it?
It's a, it's a wonderful thing, and I remember being in high school myself and hearing about the, the new thing. Which was that students were able now to sit on the board of trustees. It's something that the provincial government opened the doors for. And it's up to the board to determine whether or not, uh, they want student trustees, and if they do, they can, uh, appoint up to two of them. And we have, uh, two student trustees that sit with the twenty-two publicly elected trustees, uh, in every board meeting. Except for some private parts of the, the board session, which they're not allowed to sit on. But other than that, they're at the table, they're voting, they have speaking rights, so when a motion comes up on the table. Uh, like, for example, our yearly budget, a student trustee, uh, will, will get up and they're quite eloquent. Some of the, the, the most amazing pieces of input I've heard are from the student trustees.
Are they, do they have to be elected?
Why would that surprise you?
It, it doesn't surprise me.
Most directly affected by this.
It doesn't surprise me, and I think they bring such an amazing perspective that, that, uh, you know, we, we oftentimes, I, I think. Uh, listen to them and, and might change our minds on a particular thing.
Oh, yeah. Oh, they brought in, for example, we had a ban, there was a ban before, I don't know when it was passed, but there was a ban on cell phones in schools.
Oh, I remember that on the.
And, and the student trustee says, this, this is just not working, you know? If, if sometimes, uh, kids at their locker after school, they're gonna stay, they phone their parent. And they're saying, you know, I'm gonna go to soccer practice, so I won't be home till five o'clock, and a teacher comes by and says, oh, you're using your cellphone in the school, I'm gonna confiscate it. Right? And, and they said, you know, the other thing is that these are not just cell phones anymore, they're actually devices. And so sometimes, like, you know, a teacher's in a class and, they'll, you know, a question will come up and they'll say to a kid, you know, I want you to Google. An answer to this question so we can have this discussion in class, you know, so they can actually be useful learning tools. So the student trustees came to us a couple of years ago, and they, they presented the motion to eliminate the ban on, on devices. And to let schools, uh, decide for themselves how they would manage devices, because they can be a real distraction. You don't want that to happen. But it was the student trustees who brought that forward.
How, uh, do they have to go to the process of election, or is being appointed, or how, how, because you have thirty, you have what? How many schools do we have in Toronto?
Six hundred.
Six hundred? How, you need just two?
Two, so they.
How do you go about it?
They have their own process, where they have representatives from the different quadrants across the city. They meet. We have also a student super council, uh, that also is, uh, made up of student leaders from the various schools. So when they have their yearly meeting as a group, they elect, uh, two student trustees.
And do they get paid for their job?
They get something, I think it's eight thousand dollars for the year. Uh, they do get something, I, don't quote me on the eight thousand, but I think, they do get some.
They get some, they some, something to just, uh, uh, covers their time.
Well, it doesn't really. It covers their time like our time gets covered.
Believe me, that, the proportion of that amount, whatever, however small it is, for a student is more than the proportion for adult.
And, and sometimes I wonder when.
Eight thousand a year is much bigger for them.
Well, when we, when we have our board meetings and it gets to midnight, sometimes I look over, they, don't, don't those trustees have homework they've got in for two. For tomorrow morning's class, but they, they do it, it's passionate.
Clarify something, because one of the questions I had always in my mind was, I don't have children, why should I pay for the big salaries of the? Trustees.
You're not, don't worry, you're not.
No, no.
What big salary?
I, 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 tonight I can sleep better. However, the, the bad part, I mean, the sad part is when you mentioned about the allocation of the budget.
Yeah.
And not because why the half of the, let's say, in that example, ESL money goes to something else. But because of lack of foresight from the authorities who's supposed to allocate. These budgets based on the needs and the areas that they have to allocate, which they don't. That is very bothersome to me. Because people don't see them, don't have access to MPPs as, as easy as they have access to you. And then probably they come to you and they just put a finger on you and say, hey, I heard that the provincial government allocated eighty million dollars and I don't see it in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, it's funny, you know, you ask the question, you know, you don't have children, why would you wanna pay for school trustees? I, I mean, it, it really, it really seems, I mean, I'd rather pay for school trustees in education than, than almost anything. It reminds me, was it Jefferson or said it was a Benjamin Freeman? One of the two said, given a choice of government without newspapers or newspapers without government, I think I'd rather have newspapers without government.
Oh, no, I, 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 I did not.
You're training the minds, you know, that.
No, I, I was not talking about the education. I didn't say I had a problem with the budget of education. I had a problem understanding.
Yeah, but this is how this money is spent. I mean, somebody, I mean, you can't just throw money at something. I mean, you know, that's, that's one.
And this is the responsibility, you know.
Do you, do you believe my colleague that he said you cannot just throw the money at something? We just pass, we, the, the news of the hydra is not even dried on the ink and you say.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is, this is, uh, the biggest part of the job. And that's why there's two. There's the finance committee, the audit committee and the budget committee you were asking about, because the allocation of the money is really important. And there's also the facilities, um, committee. And the facilities committee, you know, there's six hundred schools. So every, every month we're presented with a list of probably a hundred, hundred and fifty projects uh, that are happening in the schools, like new boilers, new roofs, new windows, you know, all these different things that are happening, paint jobs. And anything that's over fifty thousand dollars, we have to approve. So we're responsible for that. So that's why we have to know what's going on in our schools. We have to make sure that the money's and money's spent properly, you know? And when it's not spent properly, then we have to fix the system. And that's one of the things that, you know, we've been doing the last few years. There was facilities, you know, the, the pencil sharpener, right? And, you know, that, we, so the, the media brought that up. We had already brought in a new manager for the facilities department. And he has cleaned house, you know, he has done a really good job of, of bringing the costs in a line. And that was at the behest of the trustees and the director.
And they, how do?
So it's that democratic oversight of the budget. That's a big part of the job.
How do you, when you get hundred fifty, uh, plans for, or, or project, or proposals for the project, let's say, month? How do you decide which one has a priority over another? You're not, you, you won't be able to.
No, no, the staff have already decided which ones are going to be done.
So you have a kind of a tariff?
And, and we just look at the list and, and we see if anything seems out of whack. And if there's, you know, we look through, I mean, I don't know what. We've probably, everybody I think goes through and looks for the schools in their area. And then if something seems a little off, you phone up the principal and say, was this project done in the school? And how did that, you know, how long were they there for? You know, what did, what do you think, you know, so you can justify, see whether the cost is justified based on, on what the principal's saying about the project. You know, but you can't go through all the hundred and fifty, each one of us, no.
Oh, well, I think, I think that's interesting though. I mean, there's some actual accountability.
Yes.
It's an amazing thing.
Uh, we are getting close to the end of the program.
Actually, I wanna ask a question then. You started, I'm just, this is, you know, sorry, this is personal interest, but you started talking about the ESL budget. And so obviously they're spending money on ESL. I'm just kinda curious what kind of ESL programs they have and how do they, how do they decide what they should be?
So ESL is essentially the classroom teaching. The ESL is you've got a school, for example, with a certain population of newcomer students. And, uh, we have teachers there that, you, you know, it's either built into the, the class or there's also a withdrawal type of program where the, the students in that, a particular class that are ESL are taken out. And they're given supports. Um, and they might get, uh, instruction around English. And, and it's necessary because you have, uh, a city that has a, a huge immigrant population.
Cause over fifty percent of the people in Toronto were born outside Canada. Have I got that right? Over fifty percent of the people of Toronto were born outside.
Fifty point zero one, yeah.
Right, yeah.
That's extraordinary.
It's extraordinary. And, and unfortunately, to be quite honest, it was ten years that the board was taking fifty percent out of that, uh, pot of money and spending it elsewhere. In two thousand and eight, after a couple of years on the board, I, I moved a motion to increase that expenditure. Uh, and the board passed it. Now, the thing is oftentimes when you're dealing with budget, you've got so many competing interests. Uh, and, and everything is important, right? There's not a single thing that the board has cut that hasn't been important for kids. Because at the end of the day, we all wanna support public education. So, uh, for me, the ESL issue was huge because it wasn't the same type of advocacy that you saw from other parent groups, right? The new immigrant communities are, are not. There, there is no advocacy and, and oftentimes, uh, they don't know the system or they, they have a language barrier. So it, it was important. And oftentimes we gotta do things, uh, that are right instead of what's convenient. So the board took a huge step.
Could you repeat that?
Convenient?
You've gotta do things that are right instead of convenient.
Sorry, could you repeat that? This is not something we've heard.
No, no, we didn't hear, we haven't heard that from MPPs or MPs, not even councillors. Uh, before we close the program, I want to ask you a very quick question and after that, I, you, you each have a couple of minutes to, to closing a, a speech to people to see what you expect from them or how they can help you with. Because I personally cannot help you in your right, but someone in your ward or your ward, if they watch this program or they go to YouTube or you broadcast them, send the link after a few days that we should be provided, then they can look at it and tell to people what is your message. But before your message, very quick question. Although you are not in the board of the Catholic school board, can I assume that whatever you said in the TDSP is a kind of the very close to what is happening in the Catholic uh, school in a sense of the duties, responsibilities, salaries and so on? Can I assume that it is the same kind of the parallel or is it a big difference between you guys and them? Or you don't know?
That, that's hard for us to answer because we actually don't know, I, I don't think we know what there's.
So you never, so you never, you, you never met with each other, kind of the thing, what, what I'm trying to get? Do you collaborate with each other at all?
We, we do.
Yeah.
We do. There are system-wide initiatives, uh, that we'll work with them. And, and a good example is that, is the Transportation Consortium. Because we're in the same city, instead of each board having its own contracts with bus operators, we get together and we actually share routes. And that helps create efficiency, it saves us money.
Homogenous in every, every issue. It is just in certain issues that affects both trustees.
Yeah.
Now, should we go? Even here, we don't have ladies, there's ladies first. So which one of you wants to go first?
Do you wanna go, Sean? Go ahead.
You watch your, your camera and tell first, uh, what is, what are your project? What you expect and how people can help you. Very simple. Or any other message for that matter?
Let's see. So my biggest project as, as a trustee has been to get the community involved in the decisions that affect their kids. And so I've set up a ward council in my school, in my area. Uh, we meet once a month. Uh, we have reports from different committees that are there. Uh, we have, I introduce, you know, things that are coming up at the board so that parents can give me feedback. Um, and, you know, and tell me what they, they're thinking about the issues. We also have, I also have a special education forum. And the special education forum is a place where parents and students and, and staff get together and we just have a dialogue about how to, how we can improve, uh, the special education services that are in our schools. So really, what's, and, and there's been a couple of initiatives that have come out of that. We've improved the, the process that we use to inform teachers about special needs kids in their classes. Because lots of times, a kid doesn't, there's, there's nothing obvious. You know, a kid has dyslexia or something. You're not gonna know unless, unless you read a report. So it's that reporting process, that, that forum has, has changed that reporting process. Uh, the other thing that, that we've been working on is making sure that there's accessible buses, uh, for field trips. So that if there's a kid in a class who uses a wheelchair, uh, they can ride to and from the field trip uh, with their classmates, which wasn't available before. And so we've been able to get that. It's not perfect yet and it's not for every field trip, but, but we're working on that. And so my real, the way that I work with the community is not to just, you know, go alone to the board, but to sit down with the community, talk about the issues. And then, and there's other community members who are going to other committees at the board and we all go together, you know, with a common voice.
And anyone can help you and how?
Oh, yes. Yes, and, and the campaign is coming up, so any help is greatly appreciated. You know, it's, it's expensive. Most of the money from the last time came out of my own pocket. And so, you know, any donations, uh, are, are greatly appreciated as well.
So we are launching your campaign tonight.
And to be clear, that is Ward. That is Ward what?
What's that?
And that is Ward.
Ward, uh, topical center.
Topical center, okay, great.
Don't forget, when you get there to all of those big money, so don't forget us.
No. The twenty-four thousand?
Sean?
Well, you know, I always say to parents, there's, there's so much more that you can get involved and engaged in. And we have great parents that get involved, you know, they volunteer at the school, they might help on field trips. But parents can actually get involved in the decision-making process. And it's not just the trustees that are bringing ideas and policies to the table. We have a, a number of different ways, starting from the local level, which is that every school must have a parent council. It's mandated by the province. And parents are supposed to be center and front on those committees. And they're supposed to be passing motions, making decisions on fundraising, on how the school spends the money, giving direction to the principal on the types of programs that they wanna see in their school. So there's a huge aspect there that involves parents. There's also at the ward council level, which as Chris mentioned, you know, I too also have a very active ward council, which is parents giving advice to me on the board issues. But further to that are the central committees at the board, uh, which, which actually report back upright through board. For example, Parent Involvement Advisory Committee. Parents go to that meeting, they can give input on a policy that's on the table. And that's the direct, uh, voice of parents. We've got great policies, for example, around principal selection that, uh, you know, the development of a school statements of needs, which is, which is done in conjunction with the parents of a school before a principal is hired. And that policy was developed with the direct input of the parent committee. So there's so much there that parents can engage with. And the more that parents get involved, the better it is for the system. Because ultimately, we want their input, we want what they believe is best reflective of the community, uh, as part of our own policies. And, and I encourage parents to get involved. And not only that, consider running for trustee, because it's a democracy. And, uh, you know, it's an election every four years. I, I personally believe the more people that get involved in elections, the better, because there's a public conversation around what it is that these elected officials do. And, uh, you know, consider that. I, I think there's so much opportunity for us as, as residents, as citizens, to be engaged in, in things that matter to us. And, uh, and, and the opportunities are there. And I hope people continue to get involved.
Oh, yes, you are running.
I am, I am running, I am running. Where is that?
Scarborough, Shiver.
Okay. Listen, that was fabulous. I really appreciate your coming in. I mean, it was educational, interesting and, uh, you know, a, a refreshing example of what democracy could be. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, we, for being here. And quite honestly, it was an eye-opening night for me. I am serious about that. I'm absolutely, there was nothing that I could say that I knew it. Absolutely not. Full one hour of the fully, and I'm going to watch this program maybe two or three times to jot down some notes.
It's great, you know, I, I think this is a really valuable resource for people. And I, I really hope that, you know, people do understand the importance of trustee elections and, you know, as the foundation of our democracy. So, you know, I, I appreciate the opportunity, you know, we both appreciate the opportunity for just being able to talk about that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Do you wanna close the program? This is the place the people could, could learn it.
Well, you know, I, uh, we'll, we'll close it. I think we, I can't close it any better than they did though, okay? They're fine examples of what the democratic process should be and is at least as per them. And thank you again. And, uh, listen, these people should inspire you to get out and run and of course vote.
Thank you. And thank you for everyone who was watching. Please participate, take part in the democratic process, vote, volunteer, or even become a candidate. Good night.